Okay, before we begin tonight, folks, if anybody has any electronic devices, if you could turn it down to a silent mode for us, please, I would appreciate that. I'm gonna go ahead and read my script. Welcome everyone to the zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, November 20th, 25th, 25th at 6:00 PM. My name is Robert Tatro. I'm the chair. I'm calling the meeting to order. We don't have a lot of public meetings or anything scheduled tonight, but what we want to do is take an opportunity to give you all an update on 40B. So we've invited some people from the town. They're gonna give us an update on where we are in terms of percentages, where our projects stand, and possibly if they wanna talk about future impact of the neighborhoods. So that's what we're working on right now. So anyway, let me do this for a minute. So good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to today's ZBA meeting. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience recording the meeting tonight? Hearing none, seeing none? Before we proceed, let me remind everyone to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly and efficiently and respectfully. The only person may speak at a ti- only one person may speak at a time, and each speaker must be recognized by the chair before proceeding. We will also adhere to our established agenda items. In the interest of time, we will limit each speaker's comments to two minutes if necessary. Please be concise and avoid the repetition and points already made by others. If a point has been covered, we kindly ask you to refrain from repeating it and ensure that we allow everyone a chance to contribute. Okay, so, um, do I wanna invite the good doctor up first, I think? How are you, sir?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Adam Bernard. I'm the town planner. Just a brief update on the status of the town's 40B and the subsidized housing. I think everybody got a letter from the state, received a couple, a couple months ago at this point already. So this board approved Perry Place 40B project over the summer. That triggered the opportunity for me to add those units, 136 units, to the town's subsidized housing inventory. And that's the list that needs to get to 10% to be in quasi-permanent safe harbor. It's a fluctuating list with every census, every 10 years, so it moves up and down, but getting to that 10% is a key. With the Perry Place units, we're at almost 7.2%. The Albert Street project that this board approved five years ago now is not on the list. That will be coming soon. They have two more buildings to complete, which should be done within a month. Once that's done, there's a whole bunch of paperwork I need to gather along with the building commissioner, put together all the paperwork, and apply to the state to get those onto the list. Once those add to the list, we'll be at 11.5% thereabouts. So that's a great thing. However, as always, a catch with 40B, the Perry Place project is a short-term safe harbor. I'll read you directly from the letter here, so I- "This certification is effective for a two-year period from July 21st, 2025 to July 20th, 27, 2027. Please note that all units must retain eligibility for the SHI for the entire certification period. If the units are no longer eligible for inclusion on the SHI, they will be removed and will no longer be eligible for certification." So those units may not be eligible, may not be certified for the full two years depending on the situation. Specifically, one situation, and this is what happened with Albert Street. If a building permit is not pulled within the first year, they fall off the subsidized housing inventory. So that's why Albert Street, even though it's being built and was approved, it's not currently on the SHI list. Same thing could theoretically happen with that Perry Place. If they don't pull that building permit within the first year, they fall off. So just keep that in mind, that that could happen, and that would drop the town below 10% again.
And that's all just based on how they calculate it and timing, pretty much, right?
Correct. It's a numbers game. It's a timing game. It's up to the state to provide another letter of certification once Albert Street's done, and if need be, again, with Perry Place, if they fall off. So unfortunately, it's a moving target, and it's not always clear-cut, these 40Bs. I think we've all learned that over the past couple of years, that it's not always very clear, but we're trying to get to our 10%. With the Albert Street coming online, you know, in a couple of months, that's gonna be huge, and will really make a difference. So if you have any questions, or me-
Do we have any questions from the board, please? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Dr. Bernard. I appreciate the background. So help me understand a couple of things that I think myself and perhaps others were unclear about. Are we, and this is just a yes or no, the first one, are we in safe harbor right now?
Yes.
Okay. So why is there, is there a thought that these units don't become eligible for the 10% until occupancy? Because you're saying it's predicated on building permit?
Yes, both.
Okay. I mean, it's just muddy to me, and I'm not criticizing you in any way, but is it building permit, and so that, how can we get credit for Perry Place? And I might use some of the wrong language, but how can we get credit for Perry Place before, before even building permit, let alone occupancy, right?
Right. So it is muddy, and it's not just you, it's all of us that think it's muddy. When it's first approved, Perry Place was just approved a few months, four months ago now. They have a one-year window to pull a building permit to stay on the subsidized housing list. I'm assuming here, I don't know for sure, but I think it's probably because some of these projects don't end up getting built, so they can't stay on the list forever. That's kind of my assumption. Albert Street fell off the list because they didn't pull that building permit within the first year. So now we have to wait until they're occupied. So theoretically, Albert Street was approved back in 2020. We had the recession back then, COVID. Theoretically, they may never gotten built, but now they are getting built, and they are soon to be all occupied, so we can get those added permanently onto the list.
And I just want more, Mr. Chairman, because I want the other board members to have a chance to jump in. So why, so we have been in a state of safe harbor since July?
Yes, July 21st. That was the date of the approval.
So that was, that was on Perry Place. Perry Place put us over.
Correct. For, for, there's a couple ways to make safe harbor. Get the 10%, which is the ultimate goal, to get above that, and if you're making enough housing per year, it's half a percent, yeah, half percent or 1%, so 35 to 70 units. If you're showing you're consistently making progress towards your 10%, that's when you can get safe harbor. There was 136 units approved for Perry Place. So that's the 1% that we get for two years. So it's a couple different ways to get there.
And I apologize, Ms. Chairman, just one brief follow-up, and I'll just be blunt. So if we're in safe harbor now, is it safe to say that we're not gonna see any applications until we figure out what happens with Perry Place, correct? Because no one's gonna waste the time to come before us if we have an opportunity to invoke all of our bylaws in the way we see fit.
Most likely, that's true. They could still apply. They could still come forward, but the town, the board, has the right to say, we're in safe harbor at the moment, we're not gonna consider this. Wallace Ave, for example, they withdrew. Athens is still going through at the state. We don't really know what's going on with that.
Respectfully, the savvy builder, I mean, they, they, they know, and they see, and they're not gonna waste their energy or, or their resources on an uphill battle. They're, they're looking for an easy win. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Cussi, sir?
Yeah, I'm all set. My, my questions were answered.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Cussi.
No, I think, I think your questions clarified my questions.
Hey, Ms. Roach, questions, comments?
Nope.
So just to recap, then, I wanna make sure, what is our overall percentage right now that the state recognizes?
7.19%.
Right, okay, so 7.19% is our current status, and this is just for the folks at home or people that are gonna watch it later on YouTube. And we are currently in safe harbor, beginning this past July 21st until July 21st, is that the right date, of '27?
July 20th, '27, unless something happens.
Okay, so July 20th, 2027. So what that means is, basically, what it comes down to is, if I recall the rules correctly, we can limit people to 35 units a year. They can still apply, but they're only small, which means the projects that are coming in likely wouldn't be attractive to a builder. So we probably wouldn't see anybody until after that two-year safe harbor is expired. I would think that's probably safe to say.
If we go the full two years, like I said, it may only be one year. We don't know.
Understood.
It's a-
Again, because of the way they interpret the permit.
It's unfortunately, it's, you ask me one question, I answer it one way, same question gets asked another way, you get a different answer.
Right.
It's not a linear thing.
Yeah, and I appreciate all that, and I wanted to add to Mr. Maron's comments, too, asking how do we got there? And I think it's fair to say that I have a lot of contact with the town during the week about certain things that they're working on, and I know that there was an extensive amount of work and outreach by the town manager, our staff, and the local elected representatives, State Frost and State Senator Moore's office, went to the state and sort of, you know, clarifying questions, asked what the status was. Please review Auburn's history, and I think with all of that that took place, this is how we managed to get reevaluated and to get put into a safe harbor. So I really wanted to give credit to the people behind the scenes that really pushed for all this stuff. You know, we've been working hard. I think the state didn't realize that we had the extensive project in, you know, Auburn and Oxford line. Our schools have been done. We've had Habitat for Humanity in here, different things. So they recognize that we were working towards the goals and not ignoring them as other towns have. So I think that's important to stay.
It certainly is, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your comments. Would you allow me one, one follow-up question?
Of course.
Because I, I can't help but being tedious, Dr. Bernard. So, so I thought that you had me completely understanding the previous discussion, but with the clarification of our percentage is 7.19, if we're at 7.19, how do we get to 11 and get safe harbor?
That will be when the Albert Street project comes online. It will get us to 11.86%.
So they are counting units right now that are not issued an occupancy permit, correct?
No, I'm counting the Albert Street to give you the number that is expected once they are online.
Okay.
The Perry Place is only counting for now.
And I think that, and I'll let it go, but that's my gray area. My gray area is your math, and I like your math, but, but your math gets us there, but we're not there. So how do we secure a safe harbor if, if it's, it's not there?
We got safe harbor because of two reasons. We got the housing production plan that's in effect, that's good for a few more years, and we had a big project that was approved, the 136 units for Perry Place, that got us that 1% of our housing increase in our housing inventory. So we need those two things to get to safe harbor. If that makes sense.
It does. It does, and I think it's the, I think it's the plan that you, you put together thoughtfully, and I can't imagine the nights that you spent on it, but in combination for it. I'm just trying to find the math, because I, you know, look, if anybody can find a loophole, it's the state to come back and say you're at 7.9 and, and pull the rug out. I'm just, I'm skeptical of this business and how they calculate it versus what we actually have. But, I mean, I think what it comes down to, Ms. Chairman, respectfully, is seeing how Perry Place goes at this point, and then, and then reevaluating our status at that time.
And that's exactly right. A lot of this will depend on what happens with Perry Place over the next six or eight months.
Thank you, Dr. Maron. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments on that one before we move on? Okay. We have a chief economic development officer. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Dr. Bernard did a good job of explaining the current situation with the 40B math, as confusing as it might be. I just wanted to also alert the board here, we have a couple other things. We're not just hoping the math works, though, we're trying to be a little proactive as well. In terms of sharing information, a lot of the information that Dr. Bernard just articulated, we have that embedded on our 40B webpage, so anyone, many members of the public can go to the planning division page and click on the 40B tab, and it'll have that math, and it'll have the scenarios described with Perry Place, with the other developments, and then what, that would, how we get to that 11 point, whatever percent we were just talking about. So we wanna be able to share that information with the public, and I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Also, I can tell you, I'm working with the town manager, working with some of these developers who have already put in applications, who is the one that's withdrawn their application, the one that's pending review by the state. I don't wanna get into too many details, but we've been, I've been meeting with various area realtors and owners of property, trying to work with the owners and the developers to channel the development into places we want it to go. Not so much into the middle of some of these residential neighborhoods, as we've seen, but more in our major commercial corridors. And like I said, I don't wanna get into specific locations, but you can imagine where those are gonna be if we're talking major commercial corridors. So we're trying to be proactive about this as well. It seems that, you know, optimistically, the numbers are gonna work out in our favor, assuming the Perry Place project comes online or at least pulls their permits, but we don't wanna sit back. We're gonna try to look at channeling developments in other ways, and I also know that the zoning bylaw review committee is starting to review a potential inclusionary zoning bylaw, which would, if that were to get through, and there's still a lot of details we worked out, but if that were to be passed, it would, for certain levels of projects, it would require additional affordable units to be created outside of the 40B process, and those units would also count on our SHI, our subsidized housing inventory. So we're trying to take a few multi-different, a few different prong approach here. We're dealing with the situations, the applications we have in hand, but we're also trying to work with some of these developers to channel them in directions we want them to go, and also be proactive with some of our regulations to see if we can create some additional units outside that 40B process, which, as we've seen, can be, you know, contentious, to say the least. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of some of those things. Happy to answer any questions about that. We're always happy to come back to give you updates as, as things evolve.
Excellent. And I think, if I just might say before we go to the board on that one, I think you made a very good point. We have a two-year window here, and I think the folks at home need to understand, this is not a time to like, we're not gonna mothball 40B for the next two years and ignore it, and then wait till it pops back up on our radar again. We need to spend the next two years preparation and being ready and making sure people are trained in how to respond to these things, and that's what we've been working on as well. I can tell you that I want, again, just one more point, and I'll move on, is I also wanna thank a couple of selectmen, in particular, Dan Carpenter. He went out of his way to create a subcommittee that I was a volunteer on, and we basically came up with, it's an outline, I don't wanna call it an SOP, I think it's far, a far stretch from that, because we deliberately wanted to make it so it was an editable document, but we have about a 10 or 15-page checklist to make sure that if, regardless of who it is, when the 40B notice comes in, they can figuratively break the glass, pull this out, and they can go through it and make sure they're not missing any checks and balances to make sure we gather all the information we need when these projects come in. So we really have been working behind the scenes to try to smooth it out. They're at an advantage on us, honestly. You know, you have all these builders, millions of dollars, attorneys, all these different things, and then they come in and they present to a board of volunteers who know the bylaws, but they've done this, in particular, one of our applicants probably has 18 properties throughout Worcester County. They have a lot of experience beyond us, and one thing I wanna also mention is, myself and Ms. Roach have recently gone through, we are in the stages of the arbitration process with Perry Place. It's not complete yet, we can't talk about the details, but it also adds experience to the board, because we now have two members that have gone through the entire process. Arbitration is the last step for 40B. So now, at least, we have members that have been through everything from the beginning stages of receiving the letter of intent, all the way to arbitration. So we now have some good experience on the board that we can share. So I think that's important to understand as well. Anything else you wanna add, sir, before I turn it over to these guys for questions?
No, all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anything else?
Not a question, Ms. Chairman, just, I would applaud the efforts, the tactical and strategic efforts of kind of not sitting back and saying, okay, we're good. I really like the proposal of a potential bylaw that adds affordable units as a condition and builds inventory and credit for that. That's really innovative. I don't know if other communities were successful in doing that, and I'm not asking if there's any data there, but that, strategically, that, that really invests in how we maintain a threshold. So that's really forward-thinking, really well done. And I would also compliment the transparency that we're offering to the residents, because it's not just, I mean, what I've run into, again, just, certainly just being a volunteer, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, but I've run into not just a butter, but townwide, you know, there's a buzz where people are interested in learning more about this, and they also recognize candidly that they don't know a lot about it, and they feel hamstrung about it in, in the limited knowledge they have. So I think increasing the transparency, making the, the things that we're asking about visible to them, and the go-no-go decisions that you've articulated of what could and if then happen, I, I think, I think it's fantastic to give the, the public a transparent look at where we are and where we could be heading.
Thank you. We're committed to keep doing that.
I, I applaud the effort. I, I, I think it's, that's really best in class.
Anyone else?
I'm nothing. No, I guess just in terms of the bylaw, you know, review, I think myself, I've worked on bylaw, I've worked on housing, the housing plan, and from the perspective of the town and the people in town, you know, stressing how important town meeting is and coming and showing up and, and having a say. If you don't want this to continue and you don't want to feel like you have no control over it, then get involved and get informed, and I think, I think you'd find that the condition that new projects and new buildings contain low-income housing is definitely not a new, it's, there is, that is absolutely happening in other communities where they're sort of already been forward-thinking about this, usually larger communities, I would say, probably than ours. But our census is gonna go up, which means our 10% is, we're always gonna be chasing it. It's never gonna go away. So putting in something where you're saying that anybody who builds, I know some of the developers won't love it, too bad, you know, saying that if you're gonna come here and you're gonna build X amount of units, you're gonna do affordable or you're not coming here, is a must. If we do not pass that bylaw, we are gonna be doing this forever. You have to. Every time inventory goes on the books, it should involve some low income, otherwise we're never gonna chase that number, we're always gonna be behind. So I think it's important for people in town who may not necessarily agree with that or think it's anti-development, it's not. You, you have to really look at the big picture. So I think getting the word out there to people in town, meeting members, that that is an important thing that will absolutely help us in the future. It'll spread out some of this housing, it'll always help us get to that number. It's a very important factor. And they are doing it in lots of other communities, yes. So for anyone, for anyone watching at home, if anyone's watching at home.
Well, that's why I wanted to have this and have a very kind of candid conversation, because I would like, when this gets posted, I want people at home to know that we're still on this. Just because we're at a, you know, somewhat of a, a break right now doesn't mean we're gonna stop doing what we're doing. All right, anything else you wanna add, sir? Thank you so much for taking your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time, Mr. Chair. We appreciate it.
Thank you. From the DDIS side, do we have anything we wanna comment on? No? Okay. I see we have a couple of concerned citizens out here, that either you gentlemen wanna make comments or have questions yourself? Go right ahead, please. Introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I didn't really come here prepared to do that, but I'm Dan Craig, and I live at 90 Wallace Ave. I'm in a butter to the 88 Wallace Ave project, and there is a lot of confusion in the town, in the neighborhoods, you know, about what 40B is, and we, we fought a project years ago that was being presented on Wallace Ave, and we knew someday it would come back, and it did. So I, I like the clarification, you know, I like what you're doing right now, you know, making people aware of what is going on and what you're continuing to do, because, you know, the, the "I don't want it in my backyard" is, just doesn't work. That's, that's not a good reason, but there's a lot of good reasons why these things don't belong in certain places, and I'm encouraged to hear that you're, you're looking at commercial corridors or at least main corridors where there's, you know, where there's some property that can be utilized without coming in and ripping up a whole neighborhood. So thank you, and we'll continue to watch as this develops over the next couple of years.
And as we are as well. So I think, and again, I can, I'm only speculating when I say this, but I think it makes sense from a business perspective, that if you look at Perry, if we have a safe harbor until July of '27, seems to me that sometime in the fall of '27, it's very likely that we'll see Perry Place get active, and we'll see possibly Wallace Ave get active at the same time, because if it's the same applicant bringing in all that equipment at the same time and having two projects, probably from a business perspective, makes sense. So it's just something we don't know for sure that's gonna happen, but I think it's a reasonable expectation to predict they might try to run those two projects at once.
Okay, is there a clarification on 40Bs? Because Ms. Roach made a comment before, and she used the, the term "low income." I always thought it was affordable income, and, and I think they're two different things. You know, low income is low income, and affordable is, there's a, you know, some kind of a, you know, a formula whereby they determine who can move into one of these places and what the qualifications are. Is, is there, is there a distinction between the two?
There is a formula. I think it's actually, I think most people would be surprised at how high it actually is. I think people assume it's very low. It's actually still a fairly reasonably, I think, high cost, but I guess I use the word "low income," "affordable," I think they're kind of interchangeable. There is a formula that's used to determine what the rent can be that's charged for the, those units that qualify, because, you know, all the units in the whole project are not, some of them go for fair market value. They're not all affordable units, a certain percentage of them.
Right, most of them actually are fair market value.
Right.
Yeah, it's only 10% per property. And what's interesting is a one-bedroom apartment is, I think it's $1,600 or $1,700 a month, that's not cheap. That's considered low income, believe it or not, or controlled income these days. A three-bedroom apartment over there right now is $3,600 a month. So I, I'm not spending that kind of money, but some, somebody is.
Yeah.
Because they're filling up. I mean, so that's really where it's at right now, which I find it pretty amazing that that's considered affordable housing, but they have the long way to convince me of it.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely. We're gonna stay diligent on this, we promise. Yes, sir?
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, Rich Duran, 61 Wallace Ave. Someone mentioned the word "volunteer." I just wanted to thank you guys. People don't maybe realize that, but it is volunteer, and so I do appreciate that. And I guess, I hate to even say this, but there's a report that came out in February of '25 from the state, and as far as safe harbor goes, they wanna move that goalpost. I don't know if anyone's aware of that, but they call it the going nuclear option. So I don't know where we go if they take that from us.
I think, can I be honest? I think the best thing people could do is get politely vocal, emails to your state representatives, phone calls to your state representative, you know, keep that kind of in their mind. I mean, honestly, that's the best answer I can give you, is making sure people understand that they're opposed to these projects or they want more control over them.
I think, I totally agree. I think I was, I was gonna say, I was ignorant to what 40B was until this all came about and have been educating myself, and it, I feel like Auburn as a community is against the state, or Millbury as a community is against the state, or any town. If we could, and this is just my, you know, pie-in-the-sky wish, but maybe we need more volunteers, but as a community, reach out to the other communities, and we'll be a lot stronger. Like, I'm leaving here and I'm going to my union meeting. We're a lot stronger than one against, as was mentioned earlier, against the million-dollar developers who influence the state. We all get how things work. So that's my, that's my piece, but thanks again.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. In fact, what I would like to tell you about that is, when we did the committee to create this sort of guide for the 40B response, one of the ladies that came in and volunteered from that was from the local, she was the regional housing committee, and we had actually mentioned those things. It would be beneficial for you to have town clerks get together and have a meeting, or town managers and assistant town managers get together and have a meeting and how they're managing it. We also wanted to have an opportunity to study some of the other towns' contracts, because they might be negotiating things that we're not. So we're gonna, those are the things we're all gonna be looking at as well. So that's actually been brought up, and I, I'm glad you're thinking of it as well, because it shows that we're all kind of on the same page here. We're gonna dot our i's and cross our t's. We're going to dot our i's and cross our t's. We're going to make sure that Auburn is well-represented through all of these things. So I appreciate that input and it's definitely going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think if we, we can kind of, unless we have anything else to add, I think we've wrapped up the 40B conversation here, right? I want to keep it deliberately kind of short so people would actually watch it at home, not get into it.
I did have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Are mobile parks, does that count as low income?
No. But I was told recently.
Mobiles.
We do have a lot of mobile home parks. We are a unique community for that reason. Some others are as well, but we are the one in central Mass that is. And I do know that there is an effort underway at State Senator Moore's office to ask for that. I don't know if it's ever going to come to fruition, but I know that that has been brought up and they're aware of it and they are talking about it. Because the initial argument was, well, they're not long-term houses. Well, look back now, they've been on Route 20 for 50 years. My house is 60 years old.
Right.
So they're just as good as, you know, the purpose of the housing that's over my head is their head. So I, I know there is some effort to try to do that. I don't know what the outcome will be, though. Do you want to add something to that, Dr. Manad?
No, they're not currently counted towards and considered affordable. Part of the reason for that is they're not deed restricted.
They're what?
They're not deed restricted. That's one of the key components of the permanent eligibility is the deed restriction.
And you know, interestingly enough, there is a trend nationally right now where investment firms are going around the country and they're buying these mobile home parks up. And their hedge funds are interested in them. They're investing in them. And what they're doing is they're letting people own the mobile homes still, but they're bumping the land rent and all the services up through the roof. So they're really kind of forcing that into a, a bad situation as well. And that's something that's only recently come up in like the last probably eight or 10 months that I came up with. And I actually shared that with the town manager and the town administration when I saw those articles coming out. Because that's something that could seriously affect the housing in Auburn as well. We have a, we have a hedge fund that comes in and buys all of our mobile home parks and all of a sudden bumps all those fees up. That's going to affect a lot of people. And one of those mobile home parks has already been sold to a hedge fund. I know that for a fact. So consider that we are on the radar. So, okay. So I think that's going to wrap up our 40B discussion. If anybody at home has any other questions, I'm sure you can send an email to anybody at the town. They'll be happy to refer your questions to the right person. And after that, I think we're just going to go ahead and move on to the rest of our topics here for the evening. So thank you very much, Dr. Manad.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one decision, 21 Hill Street for home occupancy.
That's a decision for signature, Mr. Chairman?
Correct. And while we're doing that, we have the minutes for October 16th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written and submitted from October? Sorry. That's okay. My fault. Where am I? From October 16th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept as stated, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Dr. Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? There you go. Oh, that's yours too. That is yours as well. Oh, they are. Okay, never mind. Just all my stuff here. There we go. All right. So we have the minutes. We have a modification. I know that my vice chairman is going to be very happy about this. 430 Roxdale Street, new ownership of the solar farm. The former owner, Farm Bridge 21 LLC and CAP Real Estate LLC, is transferring ownership to W E B Auburn Solar LLC. So just so you know, the solar farm permits, because they passed a law to protect those, and now they've just changed ownership. So at some point, I'm sure if they ever decide to build these things, we're going to have to get a pretty substantial update.
I would imagine, Mr. Chairman. Right. We gave them a two-year extension, correct? We did. Yeah, we did. And that was the last one. Mm-hmm. I, I remember that.
Okay. I don't have any other new business unforeseen by the chair that I'm aware of, except for the fact that I believe we've all agreed to the December 4th additional meeting for next month. Is that correct?
I won't be here.
Yeah, you won't be here for that one.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
What we're doing, just for the folks at home, though, the arbitration, in theory, hopefully should be wrapping up for Perry Place. And if that happens, we're going to have an additional meeting December 4th. And that will be a executive session to go over that and sign the final permit. And that will be it. And then our regular scheduled meeting, I believe, is December 17th. Is that correct?
18th.
18th. I'm, I'm a day off today. So the next meeting is 12/18/25. If you have any questions, concerns or permanent applications, please get them in before that. And I believe that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Dr. Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. Have a great night. Thank you so much.